I was just, I was having a morning.
Technical question for you. So usually when I pull up a five pound camisole right? Under final section.
So that happens to make some trouble maker. Yeah, there you go. No accessibility issues.
That's not even close.
Are you sure your 13 is not through sharepoint?
Get your new truck yet?
I just, I just drove all day today from Chicago.
Oh, really?
Eight hours. Eight hours straight.
That was day two actually.
My appointment was in. So the break.
So here how high they're going to drive you are.
Right now.
About it. Probably wouldn't be able to do it.
Yeah.
When I went down.
When I'm sitting in the car.
So that's just. Where do I find this?
What are you on?
Just today. Right.
That's.
Maybe because it's a different top down.
This is why.
Everything work?
Yeah. Otherwise. Oh.
I use. It's just.
Trouble on their frame.
Essentially.
Last night I was actually.
Did you come working? Did yours show up again?
Right. No.
That is.
Because Jamie's more like that because they weren't showing up for you. Are they showing up now?
Now they are, so you must have reloaded because I only heard the one here.
But sometimes this sinks and sometimes it doesn't. I don't know why. I have it. It's my old iPad. I mean, it sinks every wifi I get to in my brain.
Have to remember that with the contraption.
That's very much. Worked.
We really love her too, but sometimes it just doesn't sink.
Do you have that trouble?
I have that.
Oh, wow.
Was that what it was? Was that something?
I assume I just re. I just. And that I can easily do.
Okay.
That's just.
Yeah.
How do you feel about choices? Yeah.
We always ask. Yeah, plenty of minutes. Google.
Usually the stuff like that. I don't think everybody thinks.
Haster. Looks like the master.
It's the masters.
Masters.
We have a.
That list somewhere.
I'm not all deaf on the technologies. First day. School. And I. Not actually. I've been. Regular. Ten o'clock. One of.
Yeah.
I think. Oh, not too bad. Just.
Yeah. All good.
Yeah. I, I, I have a lot of. Everybody that uses anything.
Yeah, this is.
It's about the wash.
I just. It's sinking. Back to the bag. Around the.
It was so funny.
I'm sure.
No.
No, no.
But yes.
I'll put you on the list. Who are you talking about?
I'm just curious.
Why do I? Yeah, that's true.
That's true.
I don't know about that.
They need someone because I got to keep going on.
See, previously I worked for. He just isn't there.
Yeah.
He was referred to. So he's sometimes. Directions like.
Full blast.
There you go. It's, it's.
Yeah. When I get a reprogram back.
And then.
It really does. Look, there are a lot of.
So yeah.
I don't even know where.
Maybe the.
Who likes coming?
Yeah.
I have.
If it has a key. Door handle and drive it with a key in the door handle.
Take. That's the spirit.
I've seen some of them.
No. I will ask.
Well, and then when you need to know, you need to know.
I can start. Okay. But I don't think I can try. Well, Pat, I mean, Craig needs to call him.
Whatever professor.
Yeah.
I don't really care.
All right. Oh, yeah. I, 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 I mean, he's not gonna call him automatically. Craig's gonna call. I know. Okay, I gotta go, Dan. Bye. So. So they're talking. That was my. The terms to the call. They've done. Diversity in my. Top couple years.
That was.
So that's all there is to say? No. And I. Yeah. He really doing great job.
That's. I. I don't work or anything.
I think very.
Yeah.
If not that. Watch him buy that. And then why don't talk about that?
It's not.
Oh, watch.
That was so nice.
Yeah, until Wednesday.
Yeah. Of course. Needs washing.
I'd be watching.
No. Right. I, right. Sorry. Yeah.
I didn't see it.
How's it doing?
Apparently you can see that.
Yeah.
Always good to step on the brake.
Very good. You know what?
I was.
How you doing?
You're all dancing. I think you're lying. I had the flag of libra. Man, I can't tell what.
Nothing happened.
I know. I told. I told her. She's very.
Did you find anything out about our property thing?
No, I looked and I'm.
You saw it.
Were you playing? Hey, for you.
I'm sure you're working.
Okay.
Good luck.
I'm yours.
Why ever?
I'm just checking.
I've given you a break.
Oh, cool.
I'll, I'll come up with something about six. You know, I, I was gonna do.
Which newspaper are you with?
I was gonna go.
Which press are you with?
Hundred percent.
Oh, okay.
Running through a truck.
Just curious if you were actually with like a bigger organization or just a YouTube slash, you know. Yep. Cool.
On two properties. You know, Chris, three thirty six. Can't remember the other one. Lakeview was late. It was another part.
What's your name? What's your name?
Ken.
And where do you live in the city?
Portage Street. I'm here because one of the alleys is adjacent to. My property. I have a very tiny bit of it. It's not one of the big bits. Like the smallest bit they could possibly imagine attaching to anything. But hey. Just in case. Better to be here and hate something weird goes on.
Terribly surprised.
All right, Matt.
So what's going on?
Weird if we're crowded for what? And he's gonna play the long game.
Yeah, well, it's mine. It was just.
Right.
And I'll call to order the public hearing of October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. The time is six forty five. Ben, would you please call the rule? Member Orr.
Here.
Member Volt.
Here.
Member Shroyer.
Here.
Member Warren.
Here.
Member McLeister.
Here.
Member Matheny.
Here.
Member Wierke is absent, six present. Thank you, Ben. At this time, will we begin the public comment of the portion of the public hearing? Our topic tonight is ordinance seventy six dash twenty twenty two. Ben, would you please read the title for the record?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of one, all of a ten foot wide alley between four fifteen Portage Street Northwest and the associated garage to the south. Two, all of an eleven foot wide alley between four oh one Portage Street Northwest and three forty one Portage Street Northwest. And three, all of an eleven foot wide alley between three three seven Portage Street Northwest and three twenty nine Portage Street Northwest located within the municipal corporate limits of the city of North Bend.
Thank you, Ben. I think that's a good summary. Nothing has changed that I know of from this, so at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this?
Did you have a question? Wish that's not the right time for that.
Um, which, yeah, go ahead and ask the question, that's fine.
Um, I don't see three thirty nine listed there. There's that tiny little.
First of all, I need his name. Second of all, I cannot hear this poor gentleman, so.
We need your name and address.
Yeah.
Oh.
At the podium. What'd you say?
Thank you.
She's recording.
Yeah. Ken is McCallas. Um, I am. My parents own the house and they have passed there recently. It's in the process of estate, but still. Um, three thirty nine has a tiny little. Six by eight. Partial. Listed on the map and I don't see the address. Anywhere in there. So I'm wondering if that is just an oversight or if it's just not needed?
Uh, the addresses are just being used to does, to identify what the alleys are because the alleys don't have names.
Okay.
The fact that your address does not appear in the title of the ordinance. You, you're still, you'd still get the six by eight square.
Okay, I'm just making sure because it didn't show up and I was like. All right, that was it. Nothing.
Thank you.
Just double checking.
Anyone else wanting to speak in favor time? Okay, at this time, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, final opportunity for anyone to speak on ordinance seventy six dash twenty twenty two. Move the hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll have a, oh, that's done. Figure it out. So we'll start the next meeting at seven o'clock. What's that? That was easy.
I just had to make sure when I saw that it's like.
That's a fair question.
Double check.
I want to double check.
I think this is.
Oh, that man was drunk.
Oh, okay, so.
Initially, there was some conversation. Somebody was. Like you did a save. That's right, yeah.
Have we changed it, didn't we?
I think the disposition was kind of longer.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
I know, I know.
That's real secure.
Thank you. Kirk was trying to get. He goes. They go, is that so? Right there? No, those things.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe I.
Yeah.
It's a new face. I had to figure out.
No, I should write. Good.
Last year, she retired in May.
She spoke about that. Oh, yeah. Night.
Yeah. That's a good.
Mine's the same. Need more people to say no. Complain about it. Took too little time.
You don't want to hang around, it'll be a lot on you.
It's a good trick. I mean, I'm also. This is really good.
Yeah. Let me just.
Okay.
To my unwanted freshies. See all my things.
I wouldn't have got six.
Yes.
Oh. I thought so.
Anyway. That's a good question. Jim can take that.
Because if we weren't.
Yeah.
Counsel.
Traveler, Ken. Okay. That's ridiculous. Yeah.
So I said. It's like a.
Point one percent.
Right.
Actually, when you have the road, you know, you expect the road, you see the road. But we look at that check. We're gonna accept we have. Have a study.
Yeah, how does this data look like? Right, right.
Going forward, I started talking.
You know who used to wear shirts? And he asked them.
Really? Was he a good one or a bad one? Was it good there? Luckily, you're gonna get some ice.
Little Christmas.
Which are Halloween. And you're, you're biking through a crew. Are you coming?
I can't be here.
Settle down.
I think you better honor and spend. So.
Right. Yeah. It's good, it's good cover.
Because it's the last. This is the year.
There's some kind of trouble.
That one at this time. And then maybe hopefully just happen that.
I hear Halloween. Frozen characters.
Yeah, she can't decide.
It's a tough choice.
Say you brother Spence. Why couldn't he be?
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, exactly. I mean.
Is that what's.
I mean, blonde or. Well, that one. That one's a trend for summer.
I'm happy that you know.
Yeah. Three girls, remember?
Do you see your fair share?
I have seen Frozen. I've seen the one more times than I care about that.
So.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was more helpful than trash. Sorry, that was a little help with the.
Okay.
Trash.
Yes.
Good thing.
Sorry, I mean.
Well, see, and as if I ever.
I don't know what I was. Sent me the email.
Yeah, me neither. So that's why I wanted to be able to find out stuff that I love. One or other.
I was expecting.
It's like, oh, my god. No. And then like drives not here.
That's why.
And you don't know if it's.
Boys, you never trying. Us members out of the weeds.
Right, because like. Something like that.
You've not. Never worked it up in.
Right, exactly. Brittany.
I was pleased to see that we recycled more than we.
That's our person.
There you go, that's a good point.
It's a little.
Smaller.
For the popcorn.
I've got a question.
Or do you just get put in recycling bin? I always wonder where they get those tons.
I would imagine they weigh the trucks.
I would have to.
So. Come on. I can't believe they're using an office furniture company. And. He rode a truck. Truck full cargo. And he take it down to. It was, smells like, I think it was. Yeah, because they have paper and one side of the street. Steel rail. Things like that first weekend. I was shacking. He literally. Way to truck. Go and. See, but I just.
I know, it's not like.
So, yeah.
Did everyone stop?
We got. Your car. Don't. Your truck, the trailer. And you.
Whatever the weight difference.
That's exactly.
But.
It painful.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's.
That's true.
Yes. I definitely. I deny nerds. I got a, I got a buddy who owns a. And he. Three days gum truck.
Yeah, but nothing like before.
No, no.
Hopefully they.
I was just.
Watch that little bit. Oh, my gosh. Oh, no, those pages. For the age part.
Hit that one second minute. Thirty five.
It's been parallelized.
It was very big back in the day.
About that, it's been a nice.
Oh, I think so. That's a good. Yeah.
Right.
Please.
So we're about to talk about.
Yeah, I think double screen. Double screen.
All right, I now call to order the committee of the whole meeting of October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. The time is seven P M. M, Ben, would you please call the rule? Member Matheny.
Here.
Member McLeister.
Here.
Member Warren.
Here.
Member Shroyer.
Here.
Member Volt.
Here.
Member Orr.
Here.
Member Wierke is absent, six present. Okay, let's start off with community, community.
We move to.
Yeah.
Excuse. Member Wierke.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Daryl.
Okay. Our process on allowing permeable pavers to be a. Parking surface is prepared to move to its next step and that will be to set a public hearing. The clerk has reviewed the calendar and believes that November twenty eighth is a date for that hearing. And. So I propose that. I don't think we have any other issues that have come up since. Mr. Duro, you're.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't know if that will work.
Okay.
They want to go later. I think you're gonna get into some discussion later tonight about the calendar.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's do this then. What do we have? What do we show for our first opportunity in December?
Just haven't formally adopted that calendar yet, but theoretically it'd be December fifth.
Mr. President, is that a likely date?
That sounds good with me.
All right.
So work for.
Let me do this then. I will, I will make a motion that we set December fifth. At six forty five. Time for the public hearing on this matter. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And you're up on three.
I do, okay. We have an opportunity. Potential opportunity of annexed property, which is in the northwest corner of the city at the intersection of Apple Grove and Pittsburgh Road. There are approximately eleven parcels, I believe. These are owned by the county. And the administration tonight is going to ask us for authorization to submit a request for annexation. As many of you know. Our goal here through a variety of processes has been to grow the commercial real estate base in the city. It's jobs in the city. Its jobs in the city, we'll discuss this later this evening with the Director of Finance perhaps. But its jobs in the city and the income tax that they generate. That pay for the lion's share of city operations. Public safety, services, et cetera. This property is owned commercial, it would remain commercially zoned. And if it was in the city, any owner of that property could avail him or herself. Of our economic development assistance. That might enable. That property owner to achieve a higher level of development. It might occur under other circumstances. Patrick, do you have anything to add at this point?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, there is a map in your, in your packets. Uh, the administration is, is, is simply seeking authorization tonight to do this. And so I would make a motion. That we authorize the administration to proceed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, I need some property stuff.
Okay, um, this is just a resolution of accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission to put our information, um, on the levy. We do this just every year, and if we have something, it needs to go on, and it's just pretty routine. Any issues, concerns? If not, I move to adopt.
Revolt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And rubbish, no, not rubbish, sorry. Ordinance and rules, John, sorry for calling your committee.
Well, this is a little housekeeping. It's an ordinance approving and adopting the extension of an alternative method for portioning the Stark County Undivided Local Government Fund for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven. Authorizing the mayor of the City of North Canton to execute said agreement and declaring the same to be an emergency. I think it went down about, uh, two percent.
Point two.
Point two percent went down, so. Pretty self-explanatory and. In your packet, you probably have one of these, so. I'll make a. You know, I'll make a motion that we, uh, go ahead and approve this on an emergency basis. I think it's due tomorrow, correct?
I don't think quite that soon.
I'll make a motion, we, uh. Revolt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, utilities formerly rubbish.
formerly rubbish.
Well, what we have before us here is, um, it's an update to the solid waste management plan. Uh, this is done periodically. Um, this is the summary draft. Um, there was a period of time where, where municipalities could weigh in on this, and that was back in August. And so we're coming up on the point, uh, between October third and January first is the period where it needs to be ratified. Um, all, uh, all municipalities either have to create or join some sort of a solid waste management, uh, district. Um, great call out by, um, by our Clerk of Council here. Uh, one item of note, which was kind of interesting. Within our Stark, Tusk and Wayne Solid Waste District, actually fifty-three percent of, of rubbish was recycled and forty-seven percent was, uh, trash. I think that is kind of neat, but, uh, I don't know, um, do you have anything else to add, uh, Patrick? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, so.
Yeah.
So with that, I move.
It was fifty-three percent of rubbish, you said?
Fifty-three percent was recycled, so.
We are consistently one of the highest.
It is impressive.
North Canton is very high in recycling, and we do receive a grant, a recycling grant that we use money for.
Very cool. I'll move that we adopt.
Revolt, second.
Or put on the agenda, excuse me.
Revolt, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Go into the budget items, um. We want, I mean, how do we want to propose? There's no set. Place for this, um.
Admin has a presentation.
What's that?
Admin has a presentation.
Okay, so we'll start with the presentation, that's fine. Okay.
Go numbers first, okay.
We'll do the numbers first. What do you want to do?
Well, we'll go later when we get to.
All right, we'll do the presentation first. Okay, well, uh, thank you, Council, Chair of the Committee, uh, for this opportunity to present the twenty twenty-three Mayor's Budget for the City of North Canton. And, uh, this has been a, uh, a long process, uh, as many of you know. We have, each year, we improve upon that process, not to say that last year's wasn't good, but there's always a, a, a focus here to tweak and to make it even better. Uh, we've involved Council, um, early on in discussions about this. Um, we, uh, started with the Finance Department, uh, earlier in the process as well. Uh, and we think that we've developed, uh, uh. A much more comprehensive understanding of what we were, uh, trying to do by all the departments together. Uh, we briefed our department heads collectively, uh, they're all part of the team. We should all know what each other's budget is, so they understand what they fit. All right, so the focus of this budget is people. Is people. And, you know, some of the stuff that we're going to get into here with, uh, the slideshow presentation, uh, talks about the journey that we've gone on, uh, in the last five years. Last five years, basically since I've been here. And what the situation was when I got here. And, you know, uh, it shouldn't be a surprise, but, uh, in many respects, from a management standpoint, it was a trade. And it's taken us five years to dig out. To get to a point where we can accomplish things that the council and the mayor and the community have asked us to work towards. If you don't have the people, you can't do it. And I don't just mean bodies, that you just hire bodies that have bodies. I think quality employees, uh, people that understand our vision and our mission statement. We'll see more about that in a bit. And, uh, those that don't have been, you know, kindly, uh, shown the exit from the highway. Where they need to go. We don't have time for that. We, we are too small of a, of a, uh, of service, uh, organization to be able to have the luxury of, of non-performers. So, uh, part of our job has been to introduce these levels of accountability and responsibility. And that if you fail in that regard, we've instituted some, uh, standard, uh, human resource, uh, moves, things that, you know, we haven't had before. But Performance Improvement Plan, we've gone through a couple of those to try to help people become better employees. But ultimately, uh, if they're unwilling to engage and, and follow the directive, then, uh, it's time to look for new, uh, people. So we think that we've right-sized, uh, our employees, uh, over the last five years as far as moving, sifting through those individuals and getting us to a point where we are really able to execute then. Uh, but in spite of that, uh, there is still always more to do. There's more that you want done. You would like, you know, more curb and gutter projects. Curb and gutter projects are expensive to outsource. But for a time, that's all this city did was outsource it because they didn't believe in labor. And we found that with the right people and the right management, uh, the right, uh, incentives, if you will, through their contract, just being appreciated as employees. That there is a willingness and a desire to put in a whole bunch of different things, and it saves us a lot of money, and we can get more done. Um, we acquired the, you know, curb making, curb gutter making machine. You know that from a couple of years back, two years ago. And then last year, we moved into the, uh, the paving machine. Well, you'll see in our, your budget tonight, you know, we're asking for more, uh, individuals in the, in that department. Because, you know, how many do we have in that, seven?
In the street pressure?
Seven, yeah, seven. Uh, you know, it takes, you know, uh, four or five people to run, you know, each machine. I can't have the same people running the machines simultaneously, can't be in two places at once, but I would like to get that. I'd like to be able to have people that curb and gutter machines that are going down in war form, but the street paving machines that are going off in war two at the same time. That's not unreasonable to ask, uh, so we're moving in that direction. Same thing with storm sewers. So we know we've had the, the flood of all floods so far, uh, in twenty twenty-two. And there is more responsibility, uh, to exercise, you know, plans to deal with flood control and catch basin repairs and, and the light, and the list goes on. I guess the same people that are doing that, street, the same people doing the storm sewer. That's different than sanitary sewer, storm sewer. So again, the need for additional folks. Police Department, uh, is being, you know, called upon to provide additional school resource offices. We have two new schools being built. And we should say that that is a special, um. Collaboration, if you will, the dialogue maybe, that the mayor, Wilder, has had with school officials that didn't exist before. Didn't exist. Why does that matter? Well, that school that was in Greentown, well, all those people are now going to be employees inside the city limits. Didn't have to be. If we had continued our hostilities and not worked together, chances are that one of those schools could have been built outside the city. So it's very important, uh, uh, this role that we are being asked to help fulfill. So the additional, the agreement that we have with the schools at the present time is they fund seventy-five percent of that S R O cost. And we picked up the other twenty-five percent, uh, because basically, you know, three months out of the year, there is a school, so we will use those folks, uh, in our police department. Um. But there are still some things that, you know, I'm not trying to sound, you know, the alarm bells, if you will, but these are things that we did talk about. And they really need to have the conversation with the community, uh, about a couple of particular areas that are in need of, um, a, a, a plan. Particularly as it relates to fire and EMS. So that's the most important one that I want to talk about. I'm not going to talk about everything, I'm going to share this topic with you. Gina and Catherine, on these things, but fire and EMS. Okay. We are, you know, most appreciative to the voters of this community that have, you know, approved, um, the levies that we, we had asked for. We had said that those funds would replace, uh, monies that were being drained out of the general fund to support fire and EMS operations. Uh, we have fulfilled that, uh, obligation, and it is creating opportunities for the rest of the departments to grow. You know, with an eight million dollar general fund, or is it income tax fund, same thing, right? Same thing. General fund budget, uh, and previously, you know, one point three million coming out of that general fund budget to support fire and EMS operations doesn't leave much money left handle all the other departments. And the other needs that are, are necessary. So that's why with the replacement of that, or those levies successfully, we are looking at making this that, that people budget. But the model that we have with the fire and EMS department, in my opinion, um, no longer properly serves the community. It's, it's a, a model from an era gone by where we were large, you know, solely a volunteer fire department, and then we kind of transitioned into a part-time, paid volunteer fire department to a hybrid department where fire and EMS are together, and you have to have all these degrees and designations and, and the like. And without, you know, any studies being done along the way, it's kind of put us in a position now where those people are hard to find. It's hard to find those folks and get them in. And then we're competing with everybody else that wants to get them in, in other cities that pay probably a lot more. They, they, we know that we took a run at this a couple of years ago about a new building. It's not just about a new building, it's about having something new. It's that operating out of two locations. Is not cost-effective, it's costing the city too much money to run two locations. So just as an example. You know, so a call goes out for a fire service that they respond out of Station One. And people leave that building and go respond to the auto accident or whatever it is that requires those vehicles from that location to leave. Well, uh, now there's nobody left there. So we send people maybe down from Station Two on Seventh Street to cover there. And then we're short on people on Station Two, so we do a call out, people to come in and replace the people at Two. And then, uh, it's anybody and everybody that comes, it's an all hands on deck call. And this is a very expensive way to run a fire EMS department. So we think that, uh, we've, we've reached the point, talking with the chief, that he feels that the time is at hand, that we need to be, uh, to get very serious about the direction we're going and get there, uh, in all due speed. Uh, to that end, uh, I am, uh, engaging a independent, a national consultant that studies fire department, EMS department operation. And the scope of service that we are engaging with will look at everything. It will look at, uh, these locations, it'll look at if we built a new one at a new location. We think that they're largely going to support the exist where we leave a new location of a consolidated building, we'd be, you know, we've had some work done by the county, they've supported that, uh, conclusion as well. But this hybrid model, the part-time, the nature of our calls, what type of calls do we get? Well, you know, the number of calls that we are running on a monthly basis, uh, out of our, that department, uh, is exceeding three hundred a month. You know, ten years ago, it was half that. Yet our staffing is relatively the same, but our overtime is killing us. So what is the nature of those calls? We've done some analysis on the nature of those calls. And, uh, the vast majority, I would say a sign, a high, high percentage anyhow, might be, might be more than fifty percent. Are, uh, I've fallen, I can't get up. From certain assisted living facilities and nursing homes. Now, we know in talking with folks in the industry that these entities, uh, have cut back on services for budgetary reasons or liability reasons. They don't want their staff to pick up somebody that's fallen out of bed, and the response is call the fire department. This is happening everywhere, it's not just unique to us. But other communities are moving forward with plans to try to address that. Because I think everyone here would agree that our goal in life as, as this community is not to be in the business of a silent partner with these facilities. So we have to address these issues. So a national expert's going to come in, uh, engage us with us on the scope of work. It'll take them, uh, three or four months to load the data from all of our calls in. Uh, from that point, they'll, they'll interview and come to North Canton after the first of the year and start engaging on a level with our fire personnel, with administrative personnel, and talking about, in their view, what they've learned. They hope to have that, um, play completed by summer, and then, then we would want to bring that plan to City Council and then let, let everybody, uh, understand that, see that, question it, opine over it, and then try to figure out what our next move is. So nothing's predetermined, it's strictly and sincerely an open book. You tell us, based on your experience, what you see in other communities and what we could be doing here. Uh, next, I only have three, so the next one is code enforcement, nuisance evasion. And, uh, I can't tell you, uh, how important really this is, that I feel we must. And I can't tell you how important really this is, that I feel we must make significant inroads by the end of this year in turning the corner on this. I spend a considerable amount of time driving the city, all four words. This year, this summer, I drove every city in the street assisting with an assessment and analysis for data on gravel driveways and the type of properties associated with gravel driveways. And what I note is what we have inherited here from previous administration, that there wasn't, there is none. No code enforcement, no nuisance abatement. People went around and got the low hanging fruit. There's some signs over here that should be taken down, you know, the easy stuff. But to get to the real stuff that makes a difference in property valuations, that isn't being tackled, hasn't been tackled, and we have to tackle it. We know that in our surveys that we do, the community surveys the council puts out, that, you know, no one is virtually happy with where we are with that. Everybody has issues with neighboring properties that they would like to address. So whether it's, you know, grass complaints, leaf complaints, I was out, I take pictures myself, took a picture of a house that had three trees growing out of the roof. Three trees? In the middle of the roof. Not that the roof looked that bad, it's just that it was so full of debris, leaves, that they were never cleaned, year after year after year, that things finally took root. That's unacceptable, right? But it shouldn't require, you know, and obviously we're being very candid here today. And I think that's what the community needs, is a candid conversation. But it shouldn't, you know, it shouldn't come down to the administrator driving the city, trying, you know, finding these things. So to that end, what we are looking for this next budget cycle to do is, in addition to engaging an additional nuisance officer via SafeBill. Now, the officers, the nuisance control officers through SafeBill are the folks that go and engage with the constituent. They have the people skills. They have the full understanding of what the code is. And they know the due process that comes from after it. So they engage, they give resistance, or they get compliance, or they're working with them, or whatever. And, you know, it's still probably, you know, 80-plus percent of our complaints are resolved through voluntary compliance. But those that aren't, we want to make sure that we're following the process and giving them all their legal rights that they're entitled to as we move up that ladder. That was all reconstituted with the help of the law department currently, because we didn't have that before. Every time we went to do something, you know, the law director at that time said, no, can't do that, you didn't do this. But, right, we wrote it to solve that. And then we'd come back the next time, no, sorry, can't do that. You know, I don't need a piecemeal approach. I need this whole thing resolved so that when we start the process, we finish the process. Okay? So, you know, council has given us, you know, that ability, we think through this budget, to get an additional person in place at SafeBill that will help at that end of it. But where I'm going with it on the front end is, I need the hunters and gatherers. That's what I call them. So I want to engage, you know, two part-time code enforcement coordinators that will drive the city every day, four hours a day, five days a week. And I will train them to look for what I look for. Not to be an expert, but to find the things that need to be addressed, document them, and turn them over to the code enforcement officer within SafeBill who will engage with the constituent and then walk it through there. So that we're not wasting time and money by having a code enforcement officer driving the city, and they're the higher paid people. So I'm going to have the lower paid people do that. And interestingly enough, 100 years ago, or thereabouts, I read in the repository, you know, it says through the century, it was 100 years ago, and the Canton PD was announcing that they were starting their annual nuisance campaign. And at the time, it was focused on grass and weeds. And I'm like, seriously, 100 years? We made no progress. But they instituted patrols. They were having police patrol. And maybe back then, that was, you know, maybe a more inexpensive way to do it. But today, you know, we want our police focusing on, you know, crimes, stuff like that, prevention. So we were pleased that city council has given us additional tools. And now I think, you know, we've talked about the four Ps, policy, process, people, pay for it. All of that's coming together here. So you've helped us with the policy and we've identified the process. We're getting the people in place now, and through this budget, that's going to make it work. But you've given us vacant property registration, so vacant lots that, particularly on the commercial side that are held out, what are you doing with them? We don't know. We just can't allow them to sit empty. You have to be marketing these to try to do something. And as long as folks are engaged in actively marketing their property, they're listing it, or putting a sign out, or whatever, that they want to lease it, they want to sell it, you know, there isn't any penalty involved with that. But if you're not doing anything and you're just letting it sit year after year, decade after decade, that's unacceptable. This is modeled after a vacancy registration program in Millersburg. Millersburg was going through, you know, what they felt was a crisis at the time, where a lot of buildings were becoming vacant in downtown and were being acquired by individuals that had no interest in marketing it, just were waiting for somebody to come to them and nobody ever came. And each year got worse and worse. So they introduced ordinance, progressive ordinance, each year that you fall under the plan that you don't comply, the penalty becomes larger. And this would apply to buildings that are partially occupied. So if you were, if we had had this in place some years ago, like at the Hoover District, even though there's lots of buildings there, not all of them are occupied, a lot of them are unoccupied. And the idea is to institute this and drive them towards getting a resolution on it. And at the meantime, if they don't, and they pay the fines and the fees associated with it, it does give our city those user fees, if you will, for those that are going to choose to take that option, the no-plan option. So I think that's very important. We also have a commercial property maintenance code. Thank you, city council, for instituting that last year. And that gives us the ability to go from the outside and look around and make those determinations of what needs to be taken care of. And then we also thank city council this year for the rental registration. We have letters that are going to be going out on roughly in November notifying those property owners that we believe have rentals that are eight units or less. We've noted in a couple of fires recently that there were not any active smoke alarms that would have been caught in the rental registration inspection. This gets us to the inside of the building. And we think then with the commercial property maintenance code on the outside, the rental registration on the inside, for a lot of those structures, it's going to help us do things. And that's the end result. We have to do things. We can't continue in all sincerity to just let this slip away. The last time we conducted a study was the 2009 to 2019 period, residential property values in the city of North Canton. You've heard Daryl led the effort on this to get that analysis. And, you know, property values increased 1% over a 10-year period. Not 1% a year, 1% over a 10-year period. Now, we have Monticello, we've got Hard Knolls, we've got Sanctuary, all relatively new, all high value, should be moving it like that percentage way up, but there's stuff that's fallen down way low. It brings that average, it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable to the schools. The schools are, you know, need funding and they rely upon those property values. So fire EMS, we're going to have to have some continued dialogue on that. Code enforcement, I believe I have all the pieces and parts in place with this budget to make this happen, to make this real this year. So we appreciate that. And then on this last one, this will segue into kind of some of the stuff that Catherine's going to address, is, you know, on our parks and facilities. So our city buildings, you know, when I got here, you saw what that city hall looked like. Terrible, but that's been addressed. And, you know, I guess I'm a snipper for detail and I wasn't happy with the state of our parks. And so we've had to, we got to up our game on maintenance. And, you know, what I found is that over this lost 15-year period or so here, that, you know, the Parks Department, you know, that maintained that stuff couldn't, if they focused on that, they couldn't maintain the public alleys, right-ofways. And, you know, I started getting the calls, and that, what do you mean? We used to do it, but we don't do it anymore because we don't have people. Well, I know a lot of those people had to go away back in, you know, '05, '06 because of Hoover. But, you know, those revenues have been rebuilt and we need to get the proper employees in here that can provide us with a much more cohesive feel to our park system. We have to up our game. Look at everybody around here. This community was noted for it. It's noted for its schools, its safety, its parks, its destination, come here, great parks, all that. But everybody else is upping their game around us. Jackson, Green, Canton, just everybody, Massa. Look at all the things they're doing. Now, all those communities, you know, have dedicated funding. They all have levies. I'm not here to suggest that tonight, but I am saying to you that, you know, if we're looking at continuing to do quality additions, like what we saw at Dogwood, you know, it's going to take more than just asking for contributions and squirreling away some money from operations to be able to do that. The projects get bigger because the community's demanding more. We do think that there's some, you know, low-cost options that we can backfill, but things in this community that we don't have. Not everything has to be like Dogwood Park. There's other park attributes that we don't have that other communities do, that we need to find that low-cost solution to be involved in. But what we must do is, whatever we do, we must maintain that. We cannot fall into the trap that was allowed here, that 22 years ago, we put in a splash pad, 22 years ago, we put in a skate park, and we've done nothing since. And that skate park had just allowed to deteriorate to the point where it was unsafe. So as a management of risk, I said, we need to take that down. Safeguards on it that prevent you from getting cut, gone, rusted through, metal exposure, sharp edges. How long do we want to just leave that out there for that to burn? It just doesn't make sense. So those have been removed and we'll need to talk about the game plan at that as we go through 2023. So with that, I'm going to move to Gina and Catherine, and then I may jump in periodically, but our most important asset is our people.
Well, thank you. Thank you, city council. You guys entrust, you guys make the decisions, and then you pass it on to us and you entrust us. And Gina's going to talk about all the revenues and expenditures and all the operational, functional areas of the city. And the area we handle is the people. So I'm going to talk about the strategic human capital plan that we have in place. So what's human capital? Simply put, it's people. There's one of our guys, James McKelley, the street department. It doesn't matter what business you're in, whether it's manufacturing or municipality, people are your greatest resource. They are your human capital. So, you know, you ask, like, how does human capital determine organizational success? Well, people are who you rely on to deliver quality services. You know, the people carry out the goals and vision of the organization. People are directly responsible for the success or failure of a project, a product, or a company. People, simply put, are an investment. So a strategic organizational plan for North Canton's human capital was desperately needed. Now, strategic planning is worthless unless there's strategic vision. It's like Patrick talked about. We both came about five and a half years ago. And step one we did was we had to develop a vision. There was no vision. So, you know, what do you want to do? This statement of what, this vision statement appears on every performance evaluation of every single employee. And you can read it there, you know, we strive to be a city of choice in Eastern Ohio, live, work, and play. And, you know, when you have a vision statement of what you want to do, you then need a mission statement of how are you going to do that? Again, that is also on every performance evaluation of every employee. So they understand what their goal is and that they will provide exceptional service to the communities that we serve. So the next step in defining the organizational culture is, you know, you say, what is culture? Culture is the behaviors, the beliefs, the customs, the shared attitudes that develop over time in an organization, which directly contribute to shaping the environment and defining that organization's culture. Everyone talks about Disney's culture, high level of service. What was the culture here in the city of North Canton? Well, it was broken. When we came in, there were a lot of problems. We had, you know, inefficient organizational structure, we had lack of accountability and oversight, and, you know, you can read all of the things up there that really needed to be fixed. And even more so, these were just some of the issues.
These were some of the ones that came in that was like, every time I turned around, it seemed like there was another onion peel.
We called it peeling back the layers of the onion. You can pick and choose whatever you want to read, there's over 50 items up there. But, you know, there was just a lot not getting done. And why wasn't it getting done? Was it a lack of oversight? Sometimes. Lack of staff? Definitely. We heard that a lot when we found some of these problems. It was like, huh, you know, who was going to do it? Or so-and-so used to do it. I mean, there were, you know, just a lot of disengaged employees, I would say. Again, not vested in the mission because the mission didn't exist. And this is what, you know, we had to go in. Some of the big ones there, you know, you see, is, you know, no development, no park development happened for 20 years. Just sat. After Price Park got developed as a beautiful park and then nothing else, all they could really do is, you know, maintain and cut and clean, you know, cut the grass. So how do we fix it? Well, human capital planning takes a lot of things. It takes, first, we had to analyze the labor workforce resources for effectiveness and needing deliverables. Then we had to match the service demands and labor supply by strategic alignment of the human capital. Our community wants a lot. We have to see if we can deliver that. Maximize productivity of the workforce through consistent oversight and accountability to optimize effectiveness in providing exceptional city services. And we had to also continue to attract new staff while motivating and developing and retaining our current workforce in order to achieve these deliverable goals. So, you know, going forward, you know, with the capital plan structure, can't read that, so I'm going to bring it up on my screen over here. I would like to, down there where you are. But you can see, you know, it is a process that we have to first look in the planning. We have to see, is the current staff adequate? What skills does that current staff possess? Do those employees know the basics of their job duties and their expectations? Does the workforce supply equal the project demand? Patrick spoke of the four Ps, we've talked about it before. This is the third P. There's the policies you come up with, the process to do it, the people is the third, and then pay for it. The leadership structure was really important, too. We had to assess when we first came, and we have to continually assess this management structure and identify what leadership training is needed. Just because people get elevated into a leadership position doesn't necessarily mean they know how to manage people. They may have been technically competent, but we have to give them leadership skills. We have to set them up to be successful. So we set clear expectations of our leadership with what deliverables we want, and we have ensured a succession plan has been put in place for business continuity. I've heard it said before, oh, there used to just be a city administrator, no deputy administrator, just a city finance director, no deputy finance director. Well, how was that working out? Because when they left, nobody knew what was going on. Now, if somebody leaves, there's a succession plan. The baton is passed on. So, you know, you have to have that because you have to caution in the leadership of staff wearing multiple hats. You know, we just took advantage of some department heads. We said, oh, you want to do parks? Okay, you'll do that and building maintenance, and you'll wear that. Oh, and you'll do the water distribution department. You put so much on them. And thankfully, we did have some good people that really have worn multiple hats and still do. HR, IT, economic development, these aren't in our title, but we do multiple duties. But I caution that it does lead to burnout. It burns out your staff. So then the next step is talent selection. We know when to source candidates and where. There's no more There's no more passive recruiting. We do active recruiting. Passive recruiting is just put an ad in the paper and just hope some people apply. Active recruiting is networking, talking, being part of groups, committees, clubs, you know, knowing where that talent is. And something really unique that our workforce did this past contract was, they used to be very close-minded in lateral transfers in. It was, boy, you had to start at the bottom and work your way up. And what if the guy worked for another municipality and did that job in the street department? And he did it for ten years. We wanted him to start at the bottom and start over at a low rate and start over, you know, earn his stripes. They saw the value of bringing someone in that had that experience and they could learn from them. So they actually were amenable to that in their contract for lateral transfers to come in. And that brings in more talent. And we want to give them the tools to succeed. We properly onboard employees now. We have an onboarding process. We used to just hire them and good luck, not really follow up. So now we follow up. We check in. We have a performance culture. There's a probationary period review and then there's annual reviews. And they're all conducted timely. We also do something called stay interviews. I don't wait now until you're ready to go. You hate this place so much you want to quit. That's an exit interview. What good does that do? You've already found the other job. I'm supposed to sit down and ask you why you want to leave? Too late. So we check in with the stay interviews, sometimes with new hires. You get really insightful information where they may be like, ah, I thought the job was this, but it's this. And then we work through it because we want to keep that talent. So Patrick mentioned performance improvement plans, known as PIPs. They didn't exist before, but they do now. Those are employees that maybe aren't quite hitting what is expected in their job duties. So we'll sit down and we'll talk about that. And we consistently follow up on the performance issues, follow the progress. And it's just course corrected. And I say on there, there's some people making U-turn and some people see the exit sign. The accountability was the biggest thing. Our staff now knows their duties, responsibilities, the basics. They know who they report to and what is expected of them. And what's expected is, North Canton sets the bar high. We tell all new hires when they come in that it's a high bar. Our community sets in every area. Streets, it doesn't matter where you work, what department, administration, police, fire, they're watching you. They watch our summer workers and they make sure that they're not speeding, have their seatbelts on. They call us. We have monthly department head meetings and we meet our leadership. And then the whiteboard follow-up, that's all over Patrick's office, everything that is expected.
And we should note that all those things that she just went through, none of that was done before.
So that's managing, really managing your capital, your human capital. And just going through, we do have a process now in interviews. It's no more somebody just shows up and, you know, somebody new and they have a job and they're in the department. This is an actual interviewing process with multiple steps because we want to find the right person. They have to have the skills to do the job. We develop them once they come in. You know, we develop the talent. Those are, that picture there is some of our street department guys. They're in a training class down at the water treatment plant. And they invited other municipalities to come in because we were able to host the class in one of our training rooms. So, you know, there's the process again there on the recruiting and bringing them in and, you know, developing the staff, offering the opportunities and classes and certifications so that they're more valuable, they have more tools and their tool belts. And it's not just one guy that has the agriculture certification and he's the only guy that can do, you know, mosquito fogging. It's like, we want multiple people doing this. It's so important to invest in development. So I love this quote. A CFO, kind of like a Gina here, a city finance director, asks the CEO, what happens if we invest in developing our people and they leave us? And the CEO says, what happens if we don't and they stay? That's worse. You know, there's a cost of turnover. Everyone knows the direct costs. We spend a lot of money. You know, we put the ads out there, you have to pay for that. You have to pay for the pre-testing, drug screening background. Those are just the monetary costs, but there's also the indirect costs. You know, you have the having to train the new person, you know, the lack of motivation from prior to leaving. The new term quiet quitting is when someone just becomes so disengaged, they're just, you know, falling in and out. You know, and the cost, you know, in potentially losing additional employees as, you know, they go out the door. So bringing into some of the numbers then. Start with the Service Department here on, you know, we talked about the people needed to do more things. So in two thousand twenty-two, Parks and Rec Department, five employees. We're asking for an increase of two. That department will have seven employees. Lands and Building is not a department that really had any dedicated person, although we have a lot of land and a lot of buildings. So we want one. Street Department, six in twenty-two, gonna go up to eight, two more people in the Street Department. Water Department is just an increase of one. Breaking it down a little more for you to see, like in the Parks Department. So when I say that Parks Department had five employees this past year, we're asking for two more to get to seven. Those five employees took care of thirteen locations. You see all the parks there, the swimming pool, all of the amenities. We have forty amenities, all the rental, outdoor rental shelters, indoor facilities, restrooms, nine tennis courts, eight pickleball courts, two swimming pools, baseball, softball, walking track, stocked fishing pond. They have over eighty acres of park they have to manage. And that's all they can do is manage. It's a challenge for them to clean the grounds up, cut the grass, empty the trash, clean the restrooms, take care of flowers, trees, parking lot. Can't get to the duck stuff or the goose droppings. We hear it a lot, but they, no matter how much they power wash that daily, it still comes back. And the community wants more. We've done surveys. They've told us they want more development. You know, we get feedback. We know parks are great economic development. We see what Dogwood has done, how many people have been brought into the community. And this is what they want. They want more. They want the current parks to have updated park equipment, dog parks, adult exercise equipment, splash pad, nature trail, skate park. The list goes on and on. Well, we go into, oh, sorry, that wasn't up there. I was reading it off the other one. But going into the Street Department, now we had six employees there and we're asking for two more to bring that to eight. And this is what the Street Department employees have done this year with the six employees that they have. Eighty-nine lane miles paved, seventeen hundred feet of curb, five alleys, twenty catch basins, two big main line sanitary repairs. And we know they have the best snow plow crew with the heated streets in the winter. And again, like Patrick mentioned, ability to do more with that new paver equipment you guys, you know, approved to get, they can pave alleys, doing curves, we're less contracting out jobs. And one of the other more important things is, you know, when they're just trying to get out there and get the potholes filled and do the necessary repairs, they can't get to the more important infrastructure, GIS mapping that we need to do. Somebody needs to be inputting that in. So, you know, having more staff really helps that. So, you know, adding in the PD and Fire Department, you know, starting off Police, just one, increase of one. They're going from twenty-seven to twenty-eight. Now, Patrick mentioned Police School Services. We share that. They're adding a couple SROs that'll be shared with North Canton City Schools. Fire and EMS, addition of three. And in the Dispatch Center for the PD, it's just an addition of one. But, you know, we all love this safe community that we live in and we know the response times are good and that's the additional ask for this year. So now coming into the Administration Department. So I call Administration Command Central. And it's not to be dramatic. It is. That is what we are. We are not just the mayor's office. We're also Human Resources, IT, Operations Management, the Call Center for the Customer Service Communication Center. The two administrative assistants that sit out front take an enormous number of calls daily. They're entering in all the work orders. Everyone that's calling from a dead squirrel in a street to a more serious issue. There was a time during COVID, one administrative assistant took six hundred calls. And I can run a report on this. Our phone. That was in a one-month time period. Six hundred calls, so it's five days a week, twenty days in that month, phone ringing off the hook. You know, we handle economic development, park development, code enforcement, grant writing, research, records management. So we have a need, we do not have a position, and we want to create the Community Outreach Manager. That will be new. So that's an increase of one there. We want to add three administrative assistants because we do the administrative assisting for all departments in the city, not just administration. We're working for engineering and streets and, you know, every operational area that used to have their own admin does not anymore. It's all centrally located in our department. The code enforcement, Patrick talked about, two half, two part times equals one full FTE. And then creating a new position of the IT Systems and Public Policy Analyst. So again, like I said, because, you know, we have the administrative assistants handling all the areas. That's what feeds into the operations of administration, every department. You know, we oversee fourteen city buildings. You know, that got increased with the six-plus land bank facilities. We have the eight city departments. Give or take a hundred and twenty or so employees when we have seasonals. And then we have twelve city leaders and department heads that we follow up with. So, you know, the human capital needs, I think we're asking for in this budget. We're not being egregious or capricious. I think that we're just rightsizing the staff to provide the exceptional service and achieve deliverables. And trust me, we're not capricious with what you give us. When we, when I say we source the employees, you know, it's like Patrick mentioned, it's not just throwing bodies at it. It's an actual human capital strategy, sourcing top talent, keeping them very accountable, performance managing them, investing in them and their development, and building and retaining a motivated staff of performers focused on delivering the vision of the city. You know what they say? Teamwork makes the dream, or... So I appreciate, we do appreciate, you know, everything that City Council does for us and we take that very, very serious, that responsibility with the people that are out there delivering the services. That's all I have. Anyone have any questions for me?
Well, let's let Gina do her part.
I'm just gonna follow along on the ordinances. I don't want to add more story. I just, when we're ready to talk about the numbers, we'll walk through the ordinances.
All right, well, then I guess we will. However, council wants to proceed at this time, you're just general throwing it out there? Or if you want to just ask the question as you go through A, B, C, and D as units that I work for, we're here for you.
It's a step of the floor. If you guys want.
Well, sure. Go ahead.
With the EMS and Police Department and the levies, you know, we talked about that. When a levy passes, is there really enough money to cover? The answer is no.
That's a great, great point, John. I'm glad you came back to it. So we talked about how the EMS, Fire EMS levies generated one point three million in additional revenue to backfill that gap that was coming out of the General Fund. And as we went through it this year, it took an additional four hundred thousand?
Seven fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Five fifty to Fire and a hundred thousand.
Five fifty to Fire and the balance to EMS to make that work. So it was, you know, a picture in time. At the time we looked at it, that was the determination that has made those adjustments. But we have been since then more and more and more involved in the management operations of the Fire Department, getting to understand it, what it is. Quite honestly, that's not something that they really had. So it's been this dialogue of sharing, getting us to that point. And, you know, perhaps if we redid it over, we would have changed a few percentages a different way. Instead of maybe being this much Fire and this much EMS, maybe we would have made it the other way around. But bottom line is, it served its purpose. But even if it had been the right number today, that number is going to continue to grow. It's going to continue to grow because of the two locations. Every time a call goes out, Station Two goes out first and the people at Station One that can, backfill Station Two go. Or if they can't, they just do a call out to get people to backfill Station Two. That's at overtime.
And, you know, and previous councils are probably to blame for some of this because I think the city came and wanted this, but they didn't want to put that much of a levy on at the time. You know? So we end up robbing Peter to pay Paul all the time. And it's not the way to run a city.
That's right. And you bring up a good point. It's not just Fire, you know, Fire and EMS, but as you know, we've talked about Storm Sewer Levy. We talked about the Street Levy. Now, both of those are levies that come up for renewal in two thousand twenty-three. And historically, we've left them where they've kind of always been. Each one generates about three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So when you approve the general street painting project, you know, that I think is on this, they may be on this agenda, I'm not sure. But that's the levy money. That's it. Do we need to do more than that? Absolutely, we do. But everything, you know, comes down to a function of that, of that dollar. So we, as we get to, through the budget process, the administration is going to come back in, you know, the November, December, January timeframe, in that three months, in time of discussion about the renewal of those levies for next year. And what do we want to do with rightsizing them? We had the storm issues this year. And so three hundred seventy-five thousand is what we have to work with. So we need to up the game there. What are we going to go and ask the community for? And I would like us to go with those in the May ballot cycle. I'm anticipating other activity, other asks being made for the November ballot. And I would like to make sure that we get a clear shot at ours than perhaps from some others. So that would be something that we would want to come back and talk. And then to your point, though, about previous, the predecessor, you know, it has to go back to water. Yes, so water, the water rates that we did. I mean, you know, we can't emphasize enough how the federal regulations have changed. And we're required to have an asset management plan. We're supposed to figure out all the different things that need to get done and build a rate structure around it so that we don't end up like Flint, Michigan and other communities like that. And, you know, we had that go around with previous council that thought that it was more of a arbitrary and number whatever we felt comfortable with. We could just go with that. No, no. So we still have to spend these monies and do these things. And if we don't have it coming out of the water rates, then where does it come from?
And the water rates, the sewer rates, your chemical prices had what?
Forty percent.
Forty percent increase.
Forty percent. The federal government instituting, you know, rationing as it relates to chlorine, that, you know, water treatment plants need that and maybe swimming pools don't. So you'll see all that start to play out next year from what we see. But just as an example, you know, the part of that asset management plan, when we got the first read from the federal government, said that, hey, if you have any municipal lead lines in the ground, you need to get, those need to be replaced and they need fourth whip. Well, fortunately, you know, North Canton, for the most part, had been, you know, continually upgrading and that. And we feel that all of our municipal-owned lines are, you know, were lead-free. We're still going to have to hire consultants to certify all this stuff and be able to turn that into the EPA. But then they changed the rules since the water rates were put in place. And that rule change was, we're looking now at if there's a lead line that runs from the municipal main to the house. Federal government says, we don't think that it should be the homeowner responsible for that, to replace those lines. It should be the city. So we have to study that. We have to get the consultant to go around and we have to inventory every one of these lines in the city to determine which ones are, if there are any lead, because they would prefer copper or, you know, basically copper is what we want. In other communities, I just, you know, that are much older than ours, that have a much more ancient infrastructure, don't know how they're going to pay for it. But thank you for the question. That's another thing that has to be revisited because the way it was done is going to lead to a gross imbalance and that imbalance is going to have to be funded by the General Fund. Back to that, if we don't fix it. But it's about having an honest discussion with the community about what it takes to run the city and what you're willing to pay for. And if you're not, then that gives us the direction of where we need to go.
Before that ordinance was passed, what was it, five years, the rates were present?
There was, there were provisions in there to revisit it, but, you know, after three years, I think we did one year.
Three years at five percent and then the following.
No, I mean before that was inactive.
Oh, it had been five years.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That was on that list of fifty brown loans.
Right, yeah, I mean, we're still. Right, yeah, I mean, we're still trying to push it from that.
Are you planning the staffing changes for Fire and EMS prior to this consulting study? Think it's gonna reduce OT enough to justify that, or are you gonna wait for the study before it goes?
Well, we're gonna, we need the, we need the firefighters now, because we think that it will help us with the OT. Their firefighter EMTs, all right, so it's really.
One is an inspector, one inspector, two firefighters.
Inspector, it's one inspector, two firefighter EMTs. And it comes back to, unless there's a policy change by the city on how we're going to pay for these folks, as I mentioned about the assisted living facilities, I have to, we have to respond to that call right now. And there's just not enough people when you're running 300 calls, and, you know, 150 plus of those are pickups that don't involve transport. You just have to go up there, pick them up, but we have to institute every protocol, because we don't know what we're getting into when we get there. You know, do we rely on someone just saying, well, this person fell, they just get picked up and back in bed, and then we get there, and they've got some sort of, you know, like, the department knows to some sort of, you know, hematoma going on or whatever, and now we don't have the appropriate personnel there to deal with it. It's sending everybody all the time. And in other communities, they charge a base fee, if you will, to those, those entities that they have to, they have to pay for that. But to your point, I'm trying to do as minimal as possible, Dave, so that we can get the, the study done to give us the direction that we need to go. So, the ask was for a lot more than that, they agreed, they'd ask for six. And I said, we can't, we just go away, am I gonna do that without knowing where we are?
And just a note on the inspector, it's because of all the new buildings going in. We have two new school buildings going in, we have the Giant Bebold facility, you know, we'll have Meyer. And the inspectors that they have now are busy with what they have now. And you have that on, and we have one that's nearing a retirement. He's eligible for, you never know when someone's gonna go, so we don't wanna be in that spot, so.
So, you mentioned policy, well, when people pay, is all that, do you see the revenues to cover the number of people that you plan to add, that the mayor's willing to add, is being sufficient to cover this in 2023?
Yes, so we, we are proposing seventeen and a half new positions, the half are the part-time, right, not that not a half of a person. And Ben, will you pull just the summary, fund summary up? So, on the main page of our budget is, I'm sorry, the other, the comparison. Let's look at the comparison, and so this shows you just, on the left is the list of each fund and the revenues from last year versus the revenues that we're projecting for next year. It's a negative eight percent difference, but that includes the ARPA funds, and capital project funds for the parks, those sorts of things. And then if we look at the expenses, it's within, it's a one percent difference on expenses. So, some of those things are income tax at this point right now, is a 12% increase over last year, and we grew all the way through COVID. We never saw the decline as far as service providing businesses. North Canton continued to work, and so our income tax stayed steady. So, we, we would never present a budget that is not balanced without some remediation in, or a plan in there. Now, we do have a list of capital items and some other programs from when the departments first sent in all of their budget positions, or their budget list, for what we need to make our department the best it can be. And of course, none of, not all of those things can be added in one year. And so, when, when we compile those and prioritize those, those are the things that we're talking about, that we're presenting for next year's budget. But there is an ongoing list that we will again review next year of things that maybe didn't get funded in this year's budget.
You wanna do the 214?
Oh, the compensated absences fund, the 214. So, that is a fund that in a few years ago, five, six years ago, there was set aside some money as far, I think that was the year, I'm sorry, that was the year where the rules were put into place for retirements, and instead of getting paid out 100% of your sick leave, those rules were changed, and that, and they were capped, so that it wouldn't break the bank. Because there was a, there's a large number of people who were eligible to retire, or are eligible now, and so we need to plan and budget for their severance package. So, in that fund, when we calculate those people, it comes up to 992,000 dollars. And so, to have that money in that fund will not drain the water fund, the general fund, the sewer fund, the, all the street fund, all of those other funds such as levies and those sorts of things that are paying for those services won't be drained by a payout for retirement. Because should that money have not been there, we would have to wait a year to hire somebody, because we're paying out. Does that make sense? So, to have that, and we did budget for everyone who is eligible, and if they do not retire next year, it's absolutely fine, and we will continue to roll that money and recalculate it every year based on their current rate, and keep that money in that file aside. Ben, will you go back to the fund summary, then the first one you had pulled up? So, this is the, this is the same thing that's in your monthly package, your monthly finance report. The, the three columns in yellow are because they're estimated beginning balances for each fund, and that's because, that's just the best calculations we can do as how we're going to end up this year. We'll certify those balances as soon as we close out December in the fiscal year. So, so that shows you what the projected revenues are. The green highlighted are our levy funds. There's some other things, of course, in the general fund such as income tax. So, there's the street levy fund, the EMS, the fire, and the storm levy funds. And then the next column is the expenses. The column that is the second from the end, or second from the right, is current year overspending, current year spending over current year revenue. So, that takes into account whether or not we're using carryover balance. And then the final column, which can never be red or never be negative, the general fund would have to transfer money to support those other funds. No other fund can support general, so general is the end-all balancing. So, when we look at current year overspending, sometimes we, we wanna see, is that a trend? What's causing it? You know, we can't continue on that if that's what's happening. All of the funds in the middle are special revenue funds, which means whatever money we get in for that specific purpose has to be spent for that specific purpose. And so, such as looking at the CARES Act or Coronavirus Relief Fund, the 219 fund, it looks like we're overspending 1.157 million dollars. We're, we're spending what we're carrying over, because those are infrastructure projects that will not be bid out and completed until 23, 24. So, we, those are the sorts of things, we look at that, and we say, oh my gosh, but this is the puzzle that brings all of the pieces together, and then this is, again, what you will follow through the rest of the year, when we bring appropriation ordinances to you, or if somebody has donated money, we have grant money, new money, we certify those to the county auditor, and they say, yes, it's available for appropriation, we bring those appropriation amendments to you throughout the year. So, just, since we're on Open Gov, Ben, I'm sorry, can you drive back to the homepage? This is the new visual site for our budget. We've, Jim, the deputy finance director, Jim and Tracy in our office has worked endlessly on making this aesthetically look so much better, and added a lot more information. So, there's stories on here, there's, you can explore by clicking into anything, and I know, Steph, we talked today about the pages that you used to get with the descriptions on the bottom, the explanations as to what we had last year, what we did. So, here are those pages. And just for instance, click on one of them, you can pick any of them. On the very top, we're gonna talk about, because if you scroll down to the graph, you'll see there's the expenses. And again, if you hover over them, you can see the numbers, or if you click into them, it'll drill down in. You can still be very interactive with this budget and follow any scroll that you want to on the page. And then when you go back to the homepage, you can go into the next department or read more about, there is a budget brief, there's a very nice explanatory letter from our city administrator that just talks about the focus of the budget, the goals of the budget, and what we expect to accomplish with the money that we're allocating.
I think this is an awesome program for the community to see everything.
Gina, do you have, or Ben, do you have the, the monthly report that you could pull up that shows the income tax revenues historically and year-to-date? Can you pull that up for me just real quick?
Yes, Ben, if you, can you just go to the, even the general fund would probably have the, in the report.
I wanna, I wanna circle back with an observation, and just a, just a quick comment to tie in some of the things that Patrick has and Kathy have referenced as soon as we have it here. There we go.
That's what I'm looking for.
That's what I'm looking for. From my very limited worldview, and this goes to Dave's earlier question, that income tax receipts is the number that matters. That's what drives the services of this city. Our mission is to grow that bottom line. And I think what it suggests is, those numbers suggest is that our emphasis upon retail over the last 24 months is part of our economic development strategy is in fact pretty sound, because COVID didn't diminish greatly. That's A. So, when people say, is Meyer important? It absolutely isn't important. It's 150 jobs.
300.
300 jobs, excuse me. It will provide, what, 150 in revenue, I think, Patrick? So, that's 150, that bottom line. Why are you doing Charlotte? Well, because we're gonna have, how many jobs at Debold?
400 new.
400 new, to the bottom line. Our goal, we've got a school, thank you, our school, we're gonna have a new school that we didn't have before. Again, those jobs to the bottom line. Coming back up on North Main Street, Meyer, all those outlets will be sold. Those will produce a lesser number of jobs, but probably in the range of 100 to 150. Patrick, is that accurate? What do you think?
100, I'd say.
Yeah, we'll be conservative, 100. Again, but none of that happens without individuals in City Hall who are pursuing economic development opportunities. And those economic development opportunities require A, policy analysis, and B, grants, because some of these projects in part will be paid with grants. So, if we're gonna grow that number, we have to have a professional team that can go get the opportunity and the dollars. Because at the end of the day, for every dollar we raise means that we don't necessarily, well, I shouldn't say, you don't have to go back to the taxpayers, but if you do, the touch will be lighter. Maybe that's the way to put it. And so, it, it just, it goes back, you know, 40 years ago, we had the goose that laid the golden egg across the street. You didn't have to manage this stuff, because the money was pouring in faster than you could spend it. That's not the case today. The money needs to be managed professionally, and you have to look to that number right there to make sure that we've got, to Dave's question, we've got the resources to pay for what we need. I would argue that as the administration has proposed some additional jobs, I believe that when I was first on council back in Stone Age, we had about 135 employees. We had a huge number of people. But again, revenue wasn't the issue, and frankly, you didn't have to manage your revenue to the degree that we do today. And I think, you know, as, as we've blown through the slide, but I think the administration deserves a huge amount of praise for spending the last 60 months peeling the onion. We've got a huge amount of cleanup accomplished. We've given the tools, but the administration's done it. And that affects the bottom line when you're not wasting money.
Right, and plus, with the new, with the new shopping going up on market, that will help. As Walsh College, 40 years ago, Walsh was three buildings. What is it today? Walsh continues to grow, more money, and that's what we're after.
So, again, coming back to this notion, you know, if you, if you've got, you're professionally managed, you've got a vision, you have a strategy, you have a sound rationale for doing what you're doing, I think you can get there. And I think what we're seeing now is, as these pieces and parts have fallen into place over the last 60 months, we're beginning to see the benefits of having a well-run, well-managed city, because things will happen. Just look at, excuse me, W.J. Chevrolet, I won't use the previous name, gone. How long did it sit there? An eyesore, decade, decade. So, okay, but I think, I think this is, I, I, you know, I think you're spot on, Mayor Wilder. This is, this is how you get to the next level.
And then educating us as a council during the budget planning was huge. Thank you again.
Yeah, it was. You guys deserve the credit, because you have an interest in it, and a desire, and every one of you met individually with us, and I can't say that, you know, outside of Stephanie, who's a returning council person, but the other ones from the other councils didn't care, looked, just show up Monday night, and that was extended their involvement. So, good news to all of you for taking the time to dive deep in it. And I'm sure there's gonna be, continue to be questions and stuff that comes along with it. We're happy to, you know, answer those. But I think, you know, the bottom line is that, you know, I think Gina said that our, our expenses projected for '23 are roughly flat, minus one percent over '22, and that's with the proposed things that we've laid out. So, it's, it's trying to get there and do it responsibly, and yeah, maybe it is, the total was 17 and a half, it doesn't mean we end up higher. Let me tell you that. Marketplace, Dave knows, John, you know, Marketplace is hard to get people. So, this is certainly our intent, our plan is to get there, but, you know, we'll, we'll see how well we do.
One other comment, I think it's, that I wanna share with, with everyone, is, is that ours is a first ring suburban community. The bulk of its growth occurred through basically 1980, with some exceptions, you know, Washington Square and maybe Monticello. But the bottom line is, we know from, we know our community's gotten older, and it presents a unique set of challenges as communities get old. To Kathy's point, quality of life, public safety really matter, and we have to pay attention to it. But Patrick made a very quick reference to something that I think is, is truly critical. When we were awash with Hoover money, we began replacing infrastructure at no cost. It was absolutely critical to the preservation of the community. John Orr Street, for example, new water lines, curbs and gutters. Curbs and gutters were installed around town. Along the way, particularly after '07, that programming came to a stop. We're still a first ring suburban community, and I can take you into John's Ward, for example, and show you streets that don't have curb and gutter, because the housing stock has begun to deteriorate, or is deteriorating, not begun, idiot. And if we wanna save those neighborhoods, we've gotta get back in and figure out a way to curb and gutter those streets and clean up, clean up the neighborhood. So, it's not necessarily a luxury that we're proposing, or I would support, but it's a matter of survival, because once a neighborhood's gone, it's very difficult to get them back. And we know that from the experience in other communities. All this stuff, water lines, storms, sanitaries, curbs and gutters, they all matter. But at the end of the day, to do it, you gotta have the people, and you gotta have the funds, and it goes back to that bottom line, an income tax revenue. And that's why, again, economic development and grants are so critical, but you gotta have people who are willing to do it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, do you wanna look at item 7A?
Sure, any other comments, questions? Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Ben, do you need to read it or do we just?
That's the next meeting. This meeting we can just.
We can just talk about it, okay. So so item 7A is chapter 155 Personnel Regulations. If you remember, the maximum pay rates for each position, these are exempt positions only, not unions. They increase automatically by Social Security's cost of living, which was released on October 13th at 8.7%.
The salary cap.
The salary caps, correct, for the positions. So that is in here as well as some other items that we wanted to clean up. The annual uniform allowance for the chiefs. We did add the new positions for Code Enforcement Coordinator and the Community Outreach Manager, the IT Systems and Public Policy Analyst. Those are new positions. And then we also wanted to talk about the wages for council, how those will stay in line with the OPR's minimum. And the, there was a typo on the vacation, we're not changing anything there, we're just changing the accrual method, just the wording on those. And the only thing in, it was item K, but personal leave was not addressed in personnel regulations. It is in our personnel policy, so we just wanted to make sure it was qualified into the ordinance along with all of the other things that are spelled out in there. So those are the items in chapter 155. In item 7B, so that is, Ben, do you wanna speak to that? When we wanna add the positions, we have to increase the number of allowed positions for civil service.
Yes, so because police and fire are civil service, they have personnel caps, which are set by the city council. As Patrick discussed earlier, the schools are requesting some more SROs. And there was previously, when the SR program was first enacted, they added a clause to the police caps that said, you know, this is the cap unless you have funding from an outside source. It makes it hard to track of what the cap is and isn't, right? So this proposal is just to raise the cap to 25, which is should be, I believe, one more than we need to cover the two requested SROs and cut the other clause about if you have funding from an outside source. So Chief Kemp would be able to hire the patrolman he needs within his budget to fill the SROs, and then he just assigns a patrolman to service the SR.
So the school is providing 75%.
Yes, sir.
We're paying 25.
And we should say too that, you know, I'm not sure of the historical nature of this ordinance. I have to go back and ask the oldest member of city council to recollect. But it seems to me somewhat redundant putting a cap on because ultimately council controls the budget. And you're only gonna fund whatever it is that, you know, whatever the number is that we're doing. It doesn't matter what the cap is because it's it's what we have money for to fund. It just seemed to be an extra bureaucratic step today. I don't know, Daryl, if there was some rationale behind it back in the day, but.
I'm not sure I remember telling the truth.
I can remember it was just.
You know, to answer your question, Patrick, we as a collective body are in a much different management place than we were a generation ago. I can remember sitting down and going through the budget page by page, line by line, and arguing about whether we ought to buy cell phones. We spent more time more more time arguing about a cellphone for EMS than we did on than we did on the big cost of running EMS. I think this was just a perhaps an artificial way of council asserting its authority symbolically when it really didn't need to. That's just my guess.
Okay, item 7C. Ben compiled a list for, this is really to satisfy our auditors. When they come into audit and they like to see the resolution that council approves, these are the rates and fees for all services or anything that we are providing and charging a fee for. So it's all included in one resolution. We're not asking to change anything, we just compiled them so that you're acknowledging that these, and then the auditors will test all of our receipts against what is the established rate. So that's really the purpose of the resolution of rates and fees. And then item 7D is the appropriations, which brings everything together. List the transfers, inter-fund transfers, advances needed for grant monies that will be repaid once we receive the grant. And then the list of appropriations by fund and within each fund, by department, and within each department, the personnel, and then all the other. And the total appropriations for 2023 is 52,652,000. So yes, so if you remember, a couple of years ago, we came in and cleaned up some of the funds and cleaned up some of the just some things that were segregated out or some things that were combined together, such as dispatch was in combined in with the police department. We've separated those out, we budget for them silently now. So some of the other things, the income tax has had its own fund. And so the money would be received into this income tax fund and then transferred to all these other funds that need its help or support. And so at the end of the year, the auditors come in and roll them all into the general fund. And so we're presenting this budget in that manner. So all of the income tax will come into the general fund, and we will transfer what is needed to support fire, EMS, capital, other items. Instead of duplicating those transfers, sometimes I believe it makes our budget look inflated because we're receiving, we're showing the revenues twice with the income tax and then the transfer. And of course, we're showing the expense twice as well with the transfer and then the fund that's spending the money. So this will simplify that budget. The water capital fund was the same. So the 651 had a water capital fund, which was money transferred out of the water department into the water capital to pay for capital projects in the water. And so we're just keeping all of that in the water fund.
And we had a lot of people that purported to be finance directors before Gina. And then also, as you drill down, you'll note that the where there used to be a mayor's budget and the mayor's line items, we consolidated that all into administration. So it didn't make sense to, you know, have the mayor's salary and then assign certain portions of the administrative personnel to support of the mayor. Having his own copytaper allowance and envelope allowance, it's just, it's like, really? Is this, it's all running out of the administration anyway? He's the chief executive, so let's just try to make this a little bit clearer so that it's easier for people to see where the monies are.
Any further comments on 7A, B, C, and D? Okay, I'm gonna go through the motions one by one here. So for kind of a motion and a second to move item 7A to the council agenda.
We both move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to move item 7D to the council agenda?
So move.
Move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to move item C to the council agenda?
We both move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And 7D, can I have a motion and a second to move 7D to the council?
We both move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to street and alley, we'll have some discussion about the 2023 street resurfacing program, not to exceed $350,000. Patrick, would you like to discuss that?
Yeah, this is the the general street paving program that I had mentioned earlier at the levy funds. Of course, this doesn't encompass every street that we do. There are some rebuilds, there are some water lines put in, and then we rebuild the street and that kind of thing. So those things are elsewhere in the budget. This is just the general paving, and the engineer wanted to get this together. Last year, we did this and had it out for bid the first week of December. And then with, you know, hopefully those following last year, those returns came in at the beginning of January, and then we were able to award. So we wanna try that again this year and see how it looks. I will say that, you know, reserve the right to to not take it to the Board of Control and to resubmit and try it again later. But I'm talking with builders and contractors and people in the business of designing and building things. What they're experiencing currently are situations where in the bid, people are uncertain 90 days from now, 180 days from now, what the cost of anything will be. Certainly, they can bid it with contingency, but even that, that isn't taking into account the magnitude of change that's occurring with materials and labor. So there, we're seeing a lot of bids that are coming in way high so that they're they've covered, you know, as much as they possibly can think of as far as what this project could cost. So, you know, one of the recommendations to us was, you know, try it, see how it goes. If it's if you feel that if the engineer feels that the number is compatible with what we have experienced in the past, great, lock it in. But if it's something that's not, you may wanna wait a little bit for the economic picture to clear a bit before we go lock something in. Just throwing that out there, those are discussions that we're having.
Is there not a concrete shortage? According to the school, they laid the flooring on the two new schools, dentists and lawyers were opposite.
Yes, we, I'm not sure in their particular situation, you may know more in that regard, but in in concrete overall, that's that's one of the issues. We talked to the cement contractors and we're booked all the way through next year with limited supply that we got, so.
Okay, any further discussion or any questions right now? I'll move that we put this on the council adjournment. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
On favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned. We'll start the next meeting shortly. Three minutes.
Oh.
Our president's left us, so yes, your time.
He said three minutes.
That would be an excellent question for Wayne.
I've never had it before.
I'm sorry, what else? Here for a reason, I suppose. Sir. Yes, sir. Okay, so as far as where the alley go? So we go to the record holder about 40 times, the record of the property. Is that correct? Okay. Go to whoever the last known record holder was. Go to mom, go to mom and state, whatever it's after. Yeah. Yes. Whether it's to a president set up, ultimately could be made to the property, or so we know, break the property. What does that mean? So it will happen. It's complicated. It's usually relaxed. No. Well. Yeah. It's not feasible, but it's not a huge effort as far as what has to happen in the next event. Correct, they're gonna pay the property, they can get the property out, whatever the description is now, plus that. There's darn attorneys, right, right? Just wanted to be very, very. My address moved there. Wait a minute. Next to your. I get that, but it was one of these I looked at. I wanna ask this meeting board, I don't think they have it inside, you know. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Good. Your website or you put it up on YouTube, these things?
I do, just go on Google and get your tag, Chuck Osborne, YouTube, it should come up.
Yeah, okay. I'm just curious, yeah, yeah. Look it up.
Okay.
I can't think of here easily, so if I wanted to look, I have to read the video, I can't, but like. And it's sure, you can never know.
I've got hundreds of them.
Tell me, Charlie, two minutes, Daryl. Two minutes.
Fix the water now.
Two.
I think if you put YouTube on there, it should bring up two of those. I never ever get them, they, they, if they're coming out or something here, real quick. That's gonna make that easier, I'm not really technology.
Gina, please.
Which is true.
By somebody. So who's been? Okay, starting in two minutes. Let's get going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ben, would you please call the roll?
Number where?
Here.
Number Shroyer?
Here.
Number Volt?
Here.
Number Orr?
Here.
Number Matheny?
Here.
Number McLeaster?
Here.
Six present, number wire, cause that.
Motion to excuse me over where?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve as presented minutes September twelfth, September nineteenth, September twenty-sixth, and October third, the planning commission meetings from August third and August thirtieth, and the quarter three September finance report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, members of the public wishing to address city council may do so. Each speaker will be granted five minutes. Comments will be, may be made on any topic under city authority and for tonight are not limited to the items on the agenda. The rules for speaking will appear on both screens. This will serve as the only warning, only warning for everyone in attendance. Any violation of the rules will result in objection for the purposes. Anybody wishing to speak tonight?
Chuck Osborne, three oh seven February Street, Southeast North Canton, Ohio. On the agenda for council September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, there was a listing of upcoming meetings scheduled for October. At the conclusion of that September meeting, council president Shroyer read aloud that October scheduled meetings with meetings on the third, tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth. Ultimately, the meetings scheduled for October tenth and October seventeenth were canceled on or before September twenty-eighth. The following week, at, you know, at the October third, twenty-twenty-two meeting, committee of the whole meeting, there was no mention that half the month's meeting schedule had been canceled. For at least the last eight years, the city's Agenda Center was a place to check for meetings either scheduled or canceled. For example, the Agenda Center lists the following meeting cancellations for twenty-twenty-two. Special city council meetings on February first and second were canceled. The March fourth, twenty-twenty-two CIC meeting had a time change. The planning commission meeting scheduled for February second was moved to February ninth, and the May fourth, July sixth, September seventh meetings were listed as canceled. Five ZPA meetings scheduled for January twenty-fifth, February twenty-second, March twenty-second, April twenty-sixth, and July twenty-sixth were all canceled, and these were all listed on the Agenda Center. For three days prior to the scheduled October tenth, twenty-twenty-two council meeting, I looked at the city's Agenda Center but found no cancellation notice. I later discovered that council had canceled half of its meetings for the month of October and that this had been announced in what is called a council bulletin dated September twenty-eighth. I became familiar with council bulletins earlier this year and found that they were simply a summary of the actions of city council meetings. Why wasn't I able to learn of a meeting cancellation in the city's Agenda Center? I wonder, given that council canceled half of October's meeting schedule, can citizens expect that members of city council will receive only half of their monthly salary? Why couldn't at least four members of council show up for those two council meetings to avoid the cancellation of city business? If there were concerns that the ZPA meeting on Monday, the seventeenth, would run more than three hours than it actually ran, then Monday, the Monday council meeting could have been scheduled for Tuesday. The cancellation of the October tenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, council meeting also resulted in the elimination of the public's opportunity to speak on any topic. The agenda that came out on Friday night for tonight's meeting limited topics to agenda only. Then, early today, an amended agenda was posted to restore the public's right to speak on any topic. Why was this notification delayed? The actions of this council are not the kind of representation that is supportive of our democratic ideas. Lastly, I would like to state that the publication titled North Canton Issue Twelve: Frequently Asked Questions that appears on the city's website goes beyond providing unbiased factual information to North Canton voters and instead has evolved into illegal campaign literature in support of Issue Twelve. Such campaign activities by a municipality are prohibited by Ohio state law. Further, the creation and publication using the pretense of frequently asked questions format on the city's website violates the Ohio Revised Code, which prohibits the use of city monies to influence the outcome of an election. I respectfully ask that the issue Twelve: Frequently Asked Questions be removed immediately. Lastly, I have championed this for many, many years. First of all, I applaud the end-up analysis of the city's shortcomings that was presented. I would like a copy, Catherine, of your presentation. What was it, fifty? Failures of the city? And I appreciate your candor. And I'm sure over the last ten, fifteen years, I spoke out on those issues. And what do I get from up here? Berating, trashed, discredited. So I, again, I appreciate the honesty. And lastly, the goals that you set aside for yourself are undermined by the city's insistence that we maintain a one and a half percent income tax rate. It serves no purpose. We have no property to entice business that is overly concerned about that. We're the lowest income tax rate in the entire county. We should be raising income tax to two percent because we're a short, shorty, citizen presence for more paid streets, sidewalks, and I could go on and on.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council time? Okay, moving on to all business. Ben, would you please read ordinance sixty-five dash twenty-twenty-two?
An ordinance amending chapter seven oh five designated outdoor refreshment area of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to reflect recent changes in state law.
Okay, ordinance rules.
How about community and economic development?
Is that, did I, sorry. Daryl, community and economic development. Sorry.
This is the second reading of our DORA legislation amendments, ordinance amendments. We're amending three sections, seven oh five oh one, seven oh five oh three, seven oh five oh four. These are technical changes. Probably the most significant is that the DORA boundaries now have addresses, and that's referenced in the, in the language. The other changes are just routine housekeeping. I think we substitute glass for plastic or cup or something, so I think we're pretty fair shape. So, any questions? Just before we go, I, I did have an opportunity to talk to, remember Orr's, one of his friends? One of his many friends, not just one.
I have a friend.
Yeah, you have a friend. But it was interesting because he was, he attended the, the Main Street Festival for the first time, lives down in Cordelia. And he said, you know, the door, it was a great event, and he liked the door apartment. He just said, he didn't really understand it, but he said, what a great event it was to bring the community together. And I thought that was a cogent comment from somebody probably doesn't follow municipal affairs, but he said, we don't have a lot of that stuff and we should do more of it. So he liked the door, he liked the event, and so I think we're on a, maybe on a good path.
And I heard the same thing about the New Berlin Fest, so great events that, that this policy works to bring out.
Yes. So if there are any other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that we adopt the second reading of ordinance sixty-five dash twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you read ordinance seventy-two dash twenty-twenty-two?
An ordinance to approve and adopt current replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
All right. There's about, I think, seven or eight of them. It's basically housekeeping, it's from lights on a truck on some moving vehicles to methods of conducting bingo game publications and stuff of that nature. We share this code, we've got to put our own codes on there to it, from what I understand, so. This is the second reading, I thought it was the third, but I got it with community and all, but I'll make a motion to.
Adopt.
To adopt it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, Ben, would you please read ordinance seventy-four dash twenty-twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into a net profits agreement and an easement agreement with Unison Wireless U.S. LLC for the sale of the income stream produced from the cell tower lease agreement affecting property located at eight nine zero one Pleasantwood Northwest, North Canton, Ohio, four four seven two zero, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, Jamie, from the former Lake rubbish.
Might still be rubbish depending on who you ask, but, um, yeah, so we talked about this at a previous committee meeting. I think that this is a great opportunity for us to get meaningful money now from a revenue stream that would be stretched out over a number of years. Unison would be a great partner with this, they are a large player, and this is exactly the type of thing that they, they do, and it would be good to move forward, and so unless there's any objections or any further discussion.
That's on the water tower, correct?
It is on top of the water tower, yes, that's correct, so. I would make a motion that we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance seventy-four dash twenty-twenty-two under the suspension of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance seventy-four dash twenty-twenty-two under the suspension of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, Ben, would you please read ordinance seventy-five dash twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds of the city of North Canton and related one-time permanent transfer of monies for the period beginning January one, twenty-twenty-two and ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, we talked about this earlier, and we're just moving some different monies around, from street lighting, economic development, transfers in and out, COVID relief fund, and then parts expansion, totally four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. No other questions, I move to adopt.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion in a second to adopt seventy-five dash twenty-twenty-two under suspension of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of one, all of a ten-foot wide alley between four fifteen Portage Street Northwest and the associated garage to the south; two, all of an eleven-foot wide alley between four oh one Portage Street Northwest and three forty-one Portage Street Northwest; and three, all of an eleven-foot wide alley between three thirty-seven Portage Street Northwest and three twenty-nine Portage Street Northwest, located within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Okay, we discussed this earlier. Was the conversation okay with his address that matched up with the map? He was, title was confirmed? Everything's okay on that?
Yes, he was asking why his address didn't appear in the title.
Gotcha.
Because the frontage of his property doesn't actually touch the alley.
That makes sense. All right. I move that we adopt this reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion in a second to adopt seventy-five dash twenty-twenty-two under suspension of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of one, all of a ten-foot wide alley between four fifteen Portage Street Northwest and the associated garage to the south; two, all of an eleven-foot wide alley between four oh one Portage Street Northwest and three forty-one Portage Street Northwest; and three, all of an eleven-foot wide alley between three thirty-seven Portage Street Northwest and three twenty-nine Portage Street Northwest, located within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Okay, we discussed this earlier. Was the conversation okay with his address that matched up with the map? He was, title was confirmed? Everything's okay on that?
Yes, he was asking why his address didn't appear in the title.
Gotcha.
Because the frontage of his property doesn't actually touch the alley.
That makes sense. All right. I move that we adopt this reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, can I have a motion in a second to suspend council rule twenty-three in order to consider all items from the, from the immediately preceding committee of the whole meeting except for those before the community and economic development committee without a formal committee report?
So moved. Second.
Can you explain?
So, since we had a committee of the whole meeting, usually, if you didn't have a committee report, it's just coming forward directly from them.
Okay.
Okay, so I have the motion.
For the items that were on here.
Except for, yeah, the, the community and economic development.
So I seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read resolution seventy-seven dash twenty-twenty-two?
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, step.
It's really procedural, and we just need to move forward to make sure we're on the ballot. So I move to adopt.
Shroyer, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to adopt resolution seventy-seven dash twenty-twenty-two under suspension of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance seventy-eight dash twenty-twenty-two?
An ordinance approving and adopting the extension of an alternate method for apportioning the Stark County Undivided Local Government Fund for twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-seven, authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to execute said agreement and declaring the same to be an emergency.
We talked about this in council of the hall. It's down about point two percent. We're just spreading it out for those four years. So, I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a, a motion and then a second to adopt ordinance seventy-eight dash twenty-twenty-two under suspension of the rules?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read resolution seventy-nine dash twenty-twenty-two?
A resolution adopting the solid waste management plan for the Stark Tuscarus Wayne Joint Solid Waste Management District.
Jamie, utilities.
What in the rubbish?
Waiting for that.
It's ending.
Somebody's got to say.
There you go. So we just discussed this, this is the, you know, the, the joint solid waste district plan that is required that we adopt this or one of our, or join in with it, I should say, so I move that we adopt.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty dash twenty-twenty-two?
An ordinance amending various provisions of chapter one fifty-five Personnel Regulations of the Codified Ordnances of the City of North Canton to modify various personnel rules and regulations in the titles and compensation levels of certain personnel.
So Ms. Alabeck discussed this in the committee of the whole meeting, this is raising the cap on the positions, eight point seven percent based on the government's cost of living increase that was announced the first part of October. It's also. It's also increasing the uniform allowance, adding different position titles in there. She did an excellent job explaining that. I don't believe there were any questions during committee meeting. Are there any now?
Nope.
I make a motion that we adopt.
Second.
Ordinance eighty dash twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty-one dash twenty-two?
An ordinance amending chapter one three seven Department of Police of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton, specifically section one thirty-seven point oh four personnel in order to increase the authorized number of police patrolmen and full-time dispatchers.
David.
This was also discussed in committee meeting. This is changing the number of police officers that Chief Kemp can have, adding SRO, SRO officers. And I think that we covered that completely. Are there any questions to changing that? Raising the cap? Okay, I make a motion to adopt ordinance eighty-one dash twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read resolution eighty-two dash twenty-two?
A resolution to acknowledge the rates and fees utilized to establish the budget for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year.
Stephanie.
Okay, great presentation. Patrick, you were right. So different from so many years that we've been through this. And I think it really allowed people to ask questions ahead of time and not just look at those bottom numbers that people used to focus on and look at it from kind of an overall perspective of where we want to see the city going. You still have time to ask questions. We'll be reading this three different times. So at this point, if there are any other questions, I move to adopt the first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures and related one-time permanent transfers of monies made to various funds for the period beginning January first, twenty twenty-three and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
All right, Stephanie.
Oh my God, ahead of myself on which one. So my, so the last one was for rates and fees. And then this one is about the presentations in the budget. So I move to adopt.
Second. Quick question.
Excuse me.
Since they're related to a one-time permanent transfer of money, does that mean we can only do it one time?
Each one of these listed, man, I'm sorry. Yeah. Each one of these listed, so from general fund, we're in the budget, we're transferring two, two million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. And each one of those funds are receiving what we listed. So the fire fund is receiving five hundred and fifty thousand. EMS fund is one hundred thousand. The street fund is six hundred thousand. And the capital improvements fund is one million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Those are permanent transfers. That money is going to be transferred into those funds and spent out of those funds. The temporary advances is the three hundred thousand that we will need to advance from general fund for the Dogwood Pool House project. It's the other share of the grant for that project. So it's a reimbursable grant. So we need to advance the money, pay the bills, send it in for reimbursement. When we receive the reimbursement, we'll return. That's why it's a temporary advance.
And then if you need any more money, you'll have to bring it up.
It has to come back to council. Yes.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion and a second to adopt?
I believe you already.
You have a motion.
Okay.
Now I have a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise and receive bids and authorizing the mayor upon Board of Control approval to enter into a contract for the twenty twenty-three street resurfacing program at a cost not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thanks, Ben. This is the twenty twenty-three resurfacing program. Again, doing it a little early to give them flexibility. Just discussed it. Move that we adopt.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah. Berber reports. Patrick?
Do you need to make an emergency?
Oh, yes, sorry. Well, this-
Suspension of the rules was not requested because it's contingent on the budget passing.
Gotcha.
So it does have an emergency clause.
Okay.
But we're not an exercise.
Okay.
Okay.
Move it with the budget.
That makes sense. Okay. All right.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to yield my time to the distinguished mayor of the city.
Thank you, Mr. President. President's royal in council. My thoughts on tonight is what we heard was a, I think, a very thorough explanation about open government, business, and administration. And as Ms. Carina presented her program on human capital, the words were, our focus of this budget is personnel. It's that key element that plays in us delivering exceptional and excellent services. What I'm very thankful for is the personnel that we have is this team over here who, for the last several, several months, started putting this budget together, meeting individually with all of our leaders in our different departments, and then bringing that to you, council, for your voice and your questions and considerations for that. So we have that key personnel, which we're very thankful for. And, you know, my thoughts are this. Times and conditions change so rapidly that we must keep on, keep our aim constantly focused on the future. And along with that, I love this one quote by Walt Disney, "Progress is impossible without change." And what you heard tonight was change and progress, and that's what we're working for. And Mr. Osborne, I think you did hit a point there on those fifty items, you know, that Ms. Carina presented. And yes, you probably have brought those to the attention of councils before. But I, I say that as a credit to you. But we do have a, a council here and administration that action is part of our, is what we're doing. And there isn't a day that doesn't go by at our city, at city administration that we're not resolving an issue for someone, finding the right answer or getting them in contact with the right people to handle their situation or their concern. So again, you know, times and conditions have changed, folks, and it's, and they have been rapidly happening. And that's what we have been trying to do over these last three years since I've been in office. And I know I made some promises along the way, but I want those promises kept. And one of those was for supporting our schools and having our school resource officers because our community expects it. And I believe our, our parents and our students expect to have a safe learning environment. But that's just one thing. They covered so many other things here tonight. But again, progress is impossible without change, and that's what's happening here. Folks, you're part of that change and I'm part of that. But we have the right personnel in place right here with this leadership team. And I can't thank them enough for preparing the mayor's budget in such a timely fashion. And I guess the bottom line, and I'll close with this, that careful and critical examination of this budget is before you, has been presented before you. And I can't thank you enough. Again, I know I've said it three or four times. But this is probably the most careful and critical examination of a budget that I've ever been a part of in my time here with the city of North Canton. And I appreciate the council's input, the questions and considerations and concerns that you have for us to go forward in the future. So I'm very confident that what we have today is a great plan for twenty twenty-three. And as you know, it is a living document. And there are going to be times where we're going to update and change things as we go along. But with that being said, Human Capital Plan was, is an exceptional presentation. And, and what you have before us again, I think, was a great demonstration of what open government is and what it means to run a ci- city with a business sense and have the administration people in place to make the decisions for the right reasons, at the right time, for the right cause. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Gina?
I just want to touch on the quarterly report. Just a couple of the things you can see. Our interest rate is, of course, increasing as long as everyone else in your personal lives. It's good for the investment side of it, slowly creeping up. We're Star Ohio is at two point nine nine, the highest in a really long time. And our money market account is at point seven zero. We remain eighty-three percent invested. In our overall portfolio, I did list for you on the bottom of page five, our market value, sixteen, almost point seven million that we have in the portfolio. And our estimated interest income is around two hundred and seventy thousand for that portfolio. Our income tax is, again, as I said earlier, is still up twelve percent, recording up twelve percent. And I believe we're even higher this month, twelve point eight.
Twelve point eight.
Twelve point eight percent. So it continues to climb. Normally, October is the month, if you had extensions or businesses that have extensions, it's October. And so since we're a month behind with Rita, we'll have those more final numbers in November. I know we're closing out year end, but we wait for that third quarter to end as well, so. Oh, and then along with the quarterly reports listed online was the check register, the quarterly check register, the month revenue report, fund balance. All of those, you know, sixty-eight pages, I think, were attached. And it's available on the city's website finance page as well, if you need to access it from there.
Thank you. Ben?
I just want to quickly touch on the rental, rental registration program, which you all enacted earlier this year, takes effect January first. And Patrick has been kind enough to let me continue to assist on. Next week, we are sending letters to nine hundred and fifty properties that we have identified as properties we believe will be required to register under this program as a sort of heads up that this is coming. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that in case you start getting calls as a result of these.
Could you send a copy of the letter to me?
Thanks, Ben. Wayne, you're not on here. Would you like to comment?
No report. Thank you.
No, just can't believe we're at the last week of October here. It's going into November. We're going to have a community trick or treat, I think, this weekend, right? Those of you who should know, come out of that stage. I think I wanted to just say something else on staffing, you know, once we get through the budget. I don't want to be presumptive. I'm going to be saying once we pass and everything. Even though if it doesn't, you know, start until next year, you may see us starting recruiting a little earlier. As long as we know that it's been passed, it isn't, you know, recruiting's not a fast process. We got to start the pipeline. We got to start putting ads out there and networking. And, you know, people need to give notice and things like that. So we'll get it started early, get people in place.
Jim, you're over there. Any, any comments for me?
This is Jim's first meeting.
It's been a pleasure. You know, we've worked really hard on the budget and I just fully appreciate the way you let me add my input. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And then has everybody had a chance to welcome Jenny?
Welcome, Jenny. Hello. My name is Jenny. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
All right, let's go to council reports. Start with word one. Jamie.
All right, thank you. And actually, I wanted to thank Gina, Jim, Patrick, and Catherine. Great presentation. Also, more importantly, I want to thank you guys for the time that you took with us all individually. I know I can speak for myself. That was time very well spent. Certainly a learning curve when it comes to the budget. So I very, very much appreciate what you guys shared and the presentation tonight. And I think that it's attested with the fact, at least I'd like to think, and I think everybody in here would like to think that, and I think we do have a high level of service that we give to our residents. And I look forward to seeing the planes that you guys have presented tonight enacted because I think that takes the bar only higher. So that's all I had tonight. Let's back to word two.
All right.
David. So as personnel and safety, I get the fun part of announcing some things that have taken place the last month and bringing up some names of some of those valuable assets, those employees that make the difference for our community. So first one on the list is Sam Bacon, who was one of the recipients of the twenty twenty-two Legacy Award. Award is given to honor the effort that individuals gave during their career in the area of fire prevention and education. That was given by the Stark County Fire Prevention. Thank you, Sam, for your, your contribution. The next one was, on October twelfth, Officer Patrick Lewis received a lifesaver commendation ribbon from Chief Kemp for his actions taken during a call late in September. It was kind of a scary thing. Responded to a price park call, a person who had possibly fallen into the pond. Upon arrival, he did find an elderly female clinging to the concrete base of the gazebo. Temperature that morning was about forty degrees and patient couldn't summons the strength to move. And Officer Lewis quickly removed his gun belt and other things so that he could enter the water and help this individual get out. So thank you, Officer Lewis, for, for stepping up and being that person at the right place at the right time to help that individual. He's been a full-time officer with North Canton for a little over seven years. He was a member of the Canton Regional SWAT team. And he spent six years in the Marine Corps. So valuable asset for our police department. And the last one, Chief Kemp and Sergeant Buzzard had the honor of presenting three North Canton police officers with a six-star, thirty-year pens. Thirty years. That's, that's something to say about longevity within the community and serving on our police department. I think that even goes back to community within those individual departments. So Hockner, Randy, and correct me if I pronounce these incorrectly, Randy Mans, Officer Charlie's, Charles Manley.
Bailey.
Bailey. I knew that. And Officer Michael Foltz. And they all received their stars in front of friends and family and fellow officers. Devotion to law enforcement and thirty years, something to be congratulated. So that's what I had to report, and I will never, never mispronounce his name again. Bailey.
Word three, Stephanie.
Okay, Jamie, I'm like, just can copy everything that you just said, so I won't repeat. But just thank you. The way we did things tonight was just so different. And giving everybody that opportunity to look for the last couple of weeks or the month and the work that went into it was just so refreshing and it just keeping that overall view of where we're heading. And before we just, oh gosh, just the little details. And that is not our job. It's to, it's to make sure that we're moving forward in a, in a strategic analytical way. So thank you for giving us that ability to do that.
Word four, John.
Again, Catherine, thank you so much. The administration, thank you so much. Catherine, you, you used a word, investing in our people. It's not an expense. It's an investment. And by doing that, we're so much farther ahead. Word four, nothing was really mentioned about this, and I knew it was on the thing to do. The Whitworth baseball field looks great. Hopefully, they'll solve some of that water damage and stuff around there. It looks beautiful. Football team stayed away from it, but it looks really good. Again, thanks to the Johnson.
That was another, that was another layer of onion. It got pulled back and realized how mismanaged the effort was and with people involved at that time. So yet, unfortunately, it took us, you know, all these years later to rectify it. But like, gosh, it is, and it will be used, John.
It is very well used. You'd be surprised who uses it besides the church leagues or the Yalens or whoever. You'd really be, if you come, if you do a walk of the park system, we have great parks. You'd be, you know, the kickball league was, you know, falls here, kickball's here, you know? But the, the softball that goes on in our fields and stuff of that nature, it's really amazing. The number of people using the pickleball courts, it's great. It's really a, a great thing as well. That's my report. Thank you all.
Three items. I know the hour is late. I'll try to be brief.
Daryl.
Forgive me if I'm not. First of all is, I want to extend congratulations to Director of Finance, Director of Administration, the management team. the management team. This was arguably the best budget process and presentation I've ever participated in. Going back to night to meeting one.
Thank you.
I think it's, to echo Stephanie, I think our job is to align the budget with our public policy, which was done tonight. I think it's very clear what our objectives are, where we want to go, based upon where we've been over the last sixty months. Absolute terrific. I think it's, we did, I did talk about taxes tonight, and Mr. Osborne has suggested that we raise the income tax about one and a half percent. And I would be the first to argue that is just terribly unwise because any business that is not anchored in this community through the camp to non-tax communities, Plain Township, Jackson, Lake. If you want to put an exclamation point on that, look at the growth of Beldon Village and contrast it to the City of Canton, raising its income taxes over the years from one point seven five to two to two and a half. They hollowed out their economies because professionals could work in Jackson Township for free. Something to think about. Now, I was terribly struck as Mr. Osborne raised the question of issue twelve. I have a man's flyer here tonight for easy reference, and Mr. Osborne said that the city's fact sheet was biased. It wasn't factual and in fact was illegal. Well, I think it's important that the record reflect that the fact sheet was reviewed by legal counsel. It is legal. Number two is, I am holding a particular document in my hands that purports to be from responsible citizens who are unnamed. Who are these responsible citizens? And are the representations made on the flyer in fact accurate? And the reality is, they're not. The hour is late, and I won't go through these items point by point. But they're absolutely specious. They're false. I don't really know how a publication like this promotes civic discourse, particularly respectful city discourse. You either have the facts or you don't. And this doesn't.
Thank you. Thank you, Daryl. Okay, my turn. I just want to say thank you for the depth that administration and finance and everybody involved went into. The presentation's phenomenal, but what you did behind the scenes to come up with all those numbers and everything is also equally impressive. You know, it's, you're running it like a business. It wasn't before. That's, that's a huge step for a municipality to enter into that category. So I greatly appreciate that. I think everybody does. As far as issue twelve goes, you know, I want to mention this. It's, I find it ironic that people come to us and come to the city, complain and say, you're sleeping on this issue, you're trying to pull one over on us. We had a charter committee review this, public meetings there. We had four public meetings. You know, we're not allowed to campaign for this. We can't, as a city, throw money and things behind this. So it is ironic that people ask us what's going on, and then we can't deliver that. So I find that a little bit frustrating. You know, what, what better way do we reach out to the voters and get our information out? The news media is dead. They don't cover anything we do. Why, why can we not put together frequent ask questions on our website? That's, that's just silly to, to say that that would be illegal. And again, reviewed by, by legal as well. So on a personal note, at the New Berlin Festival, I don't know that we talked about that until right now, didn't we? I was probably in the top ten of the sausage toss. So I just want to brag about that.
Are you campaigning?
Midside, yes. I might use that actually next time. That'd be great. But that's all I've got. Thank you, administration and finance. Final call for new business? Okay, any meeting calendar coming up? We're going to, let's see, November seventh, we're going to have a committee of the whole. November fourteenth, city council meeting. November twenty-first, committee of the whole.
Could we, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Could we look at the agenda for the twenty-eighth?
I was just going to say, yep.
Could we put that on the twenty-first?
Yeah, we can double those two.
Still have three readings, but we know we have to get it in, in place and rather not run it to the end in case something happens.
Okay, so on the twenty-first, we'll have a committee of the whole and a city council. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
And then the following week, we still have the organizational meeting on the first anyway, so. Moves out.
Will the twenty-first be our last meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? I will make a motion to adjourn.
And then December fifth, you guys scheduled that hearing.
Yes, December fifth, we'll put the hearing.
Ben, could you briefly go over, very briefly, as a councilperson, what I can or cannot say about issue twelve?
So are any other issues?
So Wayne can start. But it is my understanding that you, as a private elected representative, can take a stance, but the institution of the city may not take a stance.
That's accurate. Yeah, the institution of the city, whenever they release any sort of data about the issues, they can give the facts, but they can't campaign one way or the other. They can't tell you how to vote. They can't say how they'd like you to vote. It's just here are the facts, here's what's at issue. Here's, for example, in the publication, the question was, what did council discuss when they were talking about it? It didn't advocate a position, but it stated, here are the issues that caused council to bring this to the public. You can do that as the city, but as the city, we can't say, vote yes, vote no.
Even if they know that I'm a councilperson?
Even if they know that you're a councilperson, you would say, it's your opinion as a voter, which way that you'd like, and you can give some fact behind it. But if they're saying, hey, on behalf of the city, John, what do you think the city would have us do? You can't, you can't say yes or no. You just have to give facts.
I have been saying, as a councilperson, I cannot give you, but as John or citizen of North Canton.
Perfect.
Because that is sad. We couldn't. You can't spend money and we ever spend a dime on it, so. You need a motion to adjourn?
I do.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn?
Good job. Yeah. Not bad.